February twenty.
Do you want to do that again?
No, I've already done it. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for tonight's meeting?
In the agenda?
Agenda, yeah.
Mayor Claffey.
Councilor Wood.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented with the, oh, as presented of, as to the regular meeting. Wait a minute. I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Sorry, Arrowhead, seconds. Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to an update from the registrar about special elections.
Mayor Claffey, do you mind if we allow Jesse Moyers to go first to do her quarterly update? Ms. Lynn Haas is not here yet, and she will be joining us shortly. Would that be okay if we go ahead and go to item two instead?
Let's switch items three for two.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights of the second quarter FY23 financial results. We're halfway through the fiscal year, so there's still plenty of time for things to change. But I just want to give you a general idea of where we stand with a few of our more significant revenue sources and hit the highlights on our expenditures. I want to start by giving you an update on four of our major revenue sources. We have sales tax figures for the first five months, so we have them through November. We're running about 268,000 higher than prior fiscal years for those, for last fiscal year, for those first five months. If spending continues along this trajectory, then we have the potential to end the fiscal year $700,000 over budgeted revenues for sales tax. I will note that budgeted revenues were increased by $612,000 between FY22 and 23. So to see us potentially exceed this goal by 700,000 is surprising. Just how long we can sustain this is the question that's in my mind for the second half of fiscal year.
Jesse, can I ask one, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, but on the, you haven't got there yet, but on the meals tax, why is July of last year's 13.1% negative?
We just do not know the answer to that, but yeah, it was very unusual because the rest of the months are trending higher.
Yeah, that's okay.
So next is meals tax, and we do have that data through December. Through the first half of the fiscal 23, we're up 208,000 compared to last year. Typically, meals tax receipts are higher in the second half of the fiscal year. And if this trend continues, we have the potential for our meals tax to come in favorable to budget over $800,000. I do want to point out that the FY23 budgeted meals tax, we raised it by a million dollars between FY22 and 23. So it's very encouraging to have the potential to even exceed that higher goal. Meals tax is another area that continues to just amaze us that it's being, it's performing so strong along with sales tax.
I did notice on the, on the meals tax for fiscal year 22, the last month of that year in June, which might play into your number from the, while we were down 13% the previous.
Yeah.
If you look there, you'll see it's 633,000.
Yeah.
And no other figure exceeds the 561. So therefore, in this coming June, it's incredibly strong.
It seems like a timing issue, but I'm, I can't speak to that right now.
I think that's exactly what probably is why you started out with a negative 13%, but who knows?
We also have, we have lodging tax numbers through December and through the first half of the fiscal year. We're running favorable to budget. Assuming this trend continues, we have the potential to exceed budgeted revenues for lodging tax by about 400,000. Just for your reference, the FY23 budget was increased by about $208,000 from the FY22 budget. And in addition, as you know, personal property tax is expected to exceed budget by about $900,000 between fiscal, for fiscal 23 due to the increase in values. It's all very positive news, and I'm so thankful to see meals and sales tax performing so well. What we don't know is how the economy is going to perform over the next six months. But from what I'm seeing right now, things are positive and looking pretty, pretty good. On the expenditure side, we're right around 51% expended, which is where we expect to be halfway through the year. The details on the expenditures by department have been provided in your packets. So I'm not going to read through that line by line. Instead, I want to hit a few of the highlighted items that I want to bring to your attention. Our workers' comp tail claims from when the city was self-insured increased by $200,000 so far this fiscal year. Tail claims are leftover claims from like the late 90s, a time period where the city was self-insured for workers' comp. We have the potential to incur another $600,000 to $700,000 for this claim before the end of the fiscal year. The good news is that we have reinsurance coverage with ERC, also known as Swiss Re, and we should be able to hopefully recoup some of that. The reimbursement has been filed with the help of Ursa. The other large unexpected expense was for the July storm cleanup. Those, those costs are totaling about $737,000 so far. Insurance covered approximately like 154,000 of that, and we set aside that $500,000 of carryover funds to also help with that.
Is that all insurance paid?
154, as far as I know, yes.
I mean, that's, that's been paid so far. Do we have any claims still out? We do not. Thank you.
Do we, Ms. Moyers, do we have any idea from VDM?
All the necessary paperwork has been filed with VDM. Cindy just said that we're just still waiting their decision on whether they can help cover any of that expense. We're at their mercy right now.
Okay, thanks.
So we still have half a fiscal year to go and our year in accruals. But overall, I'm pleased with what I'm seeing for the actual FY22 results compared to budget. As far as the, as the fiscal year progresses, I will review financial data monthly so that if anything changes, we can react to it pretty quickly. And that is all I needed to review with you at this time. If you have any questions regarding the detailed information in the packet, I can take your questions now, or I'd be happy to answer any questions by email if you think of anything following this meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions, Mayor?
Can I just ask, is it normal to be self-insured for workers' compensation? Do most localities do that?
I doubt they do it anymore. We ended that in 2003.
No, I, from a legal perspective, no, that is no longer the practice.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, then we can go back to item one.
All right.
Hey, Ms. Lynn Haas is here. She's our voting registrar. And because this is an odd election coming up, we have a special election on November 7th to fill the seat that Mr. Holmes currently is in right now. I thought it would be a good idea to have Ms. Lynn Haas come and speak to you about that and answer any questions you might have about the election this November.
Thank you and welcome.
Hi. Thank you, and I apologize for the holdup. So the special election really does not have any differences. The only difference that you're going to have is a filing date for candidacy that is going to move from June 20th, which would be for a normal general election, to the 18th of August at 5:00 PM instead of 7:00.
August 18th.
But the paperwork remains the same, all of the filings, campaign finance, all of that good stuff will stay the same.
Could you tell me that date again? August?
August 18th at 5:00 PM.
That's the deadline for applying, correct?
Or filing for candidacy, correct. Yep, same paperwork, your certificate for candidate qualification, statement of economic interest, declaration of candidacy, and the petitions still have to have 125 signatures. 10-day roll for the statement of organization that has to be filed. Nothing else changes.
So is that date posted?
Yes, that is posted online, and we do have flyers that I have posted outside also. I think it's on my outside window and outside my office and online.
Tell me about the 6/20 date you said instead of the 6/20.
So for, if we were having a local election for candidacy, or I'm sorry, a local election for council, the filing date would be June 20th. And because it's a special election, they, they extend that. So with this, this time around, we will have Sol and Water Director. They will have to file by June 20th.
Is there any constitutional officers that are up for election?
No, we've got Senate of Virginia, House of Delegates, they all go through the state, not through our office. Then Sol and Water and City Council is deemed the special election, which will show on the ballot, but it still goes through the machine and does everything the same as all the other names on the ballot.
And we have avoided all cost for this measure.
Correct. It rolls right into the normal election.
Very good. Any further questions?
No, thank you for working on that.
Well, that was short and sweet.
I mean, I try to keep it simple, but I did, I did print out the flyer if you guys want it and the copy of the dates that are due for campaign finance.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Perfect. So could they, could anyone give you the paperwork? Could anyone give you the paperwork just from any point from now going forward?
Once it's been, once it's been entered as a special election, they can go ahead and file now.
Okay, so now until that date?
Yep, absolutely.
And I assume in the order that you file is how your name appears on the ballot?
Correct. Everything else about an election stays exactly the same.
Okay, very good. Anything else we need to talk about, Ms. Bogart?
No, we could have started later. But if we started at 6:45, we probably would have taken much longer. So that's just Murphy's Law, right?
John can tell some more jokes, maybe.
No.
We don't have anything to talk about till the regular agenda.
In that case, I call this session adjourned, and we will re-meet in here at 7:30. The, I call the February 23rd meeting of the Stanton City Council order. At this time, I'd like everyone to ask to join me and pledge to the flag.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight's invocation moment of silence is brought to us by Counselor Edwards.
Well, it's not going to be very silent. I was going to mark African-American History Month, the tail end. And so in order to do that, I was looking for a great prayer or poem by a famous black American. And then I realized that I know a fantastic poet here in Stanton. And this evening, she's being honored by the Chamber of Commerce as the Citizen of the Year. And so I'm happy to read a poem that my friend Sheila Amadi wrote. It's called Cocoon. My mind has unwrapped like a butterfly from a tight cocoon, striving to live right, not to be uptight, shaking off dreams that have gone wrong, knowing there's a lesson in every sad song, committed to be strong, living for today, anticipating tomorrow, understanding you can have joy today and at night be wrapped in unimaginable sorrow, rejoicing through it all, knowing when I stumble, I will get up and from the fall, remembering the past, thanking God, it moves and doesn't last. Moving forward, I'm in a race. You'll lose if you try to match my pace. I've got somewhere to go. I can't move slow. I've set my course, decided my choice. I'm in it to stay. If you're not in it to win it, get out of my way. Thank you very much for listening.
Very nice, very nice. All right, the mayor's report. First things, I have to comment that Terry Holmes is not here this evening, and I talked to him yesterday. And I barely talked to him because you couldn't understand his voice. He was, he's got quite a sinus infection, so we hope that he gets better quickly. We wish him well. I got a couple of other things. Since our last meeting, Vice Mayor Darby, Chris Tull and myself met with some Mary Baldwin representatives concerning the baseball field. We got a nice letter back yesterday. It did not come with a check, but it was a nice letter. And it did offer support and help and appreciation of, of the use of the field over in our park. And they encourage us to proceed. So let's, let's keep our fingers crossed that financial support comes as well. And last night, Councillors Woods and Edwards attended the OICA Solar Panel presentation in this room. And we have an interesting project being promoted for the city of Stanton. There's 97 acres off of Commerce Road. If you're familiar, where Statler Boulevard, Statler Boulevard comes across where the Stewart Hall Field is. And if you head north on Commerce Road, that would be Route 11. If you go north, there's a 97-acre track sits in there to the right before you get to the VDOT plant. And that is where there is a proposed solar farm going in there, which would be the first in Stanton. And therefore, it's going to be the first in our area, and it's an exciting project. We have to go through a lot of bells and whistles, but it's going to be an interesting process. So I urge everybody to keep involved and keep informed with what's going on on that. And that's all I have. Do we have any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Claffey?
Yes.
Today, I attended an orientation session at the Central Channondale Planning District offices, as well as Counselor Arrowhead was there for his part on the SAW Metro Board. Yeah, so it was informative, good information. They do a lot for our whole region, so.
Yeah, they have a very wide-ranging coverage area on that. And there's a whole lot of interesting projects they have scheduled coming up and that affect so many aspects of, of living in the valley. It's, it's just interesting that really, it's, it's a good one to take a look at. You can just see what's going to happen with so many roads and so many transportation initiatives with them.
Very good. Thanks. Anything else?
Yeah. Counselor Arrowhead and I had an opportunity to go to Expo in Fishersville. We visited the Warm Shelter. We're very interested in looking for ways to serve the population who is currently unhoused. And we saw what they offer at different churches and through Expo, and we're interested in talking to other counselors about how to help those who don't have a place to live, keep them safe at night and through the day.
Because now it's kind of a moving target.
It's a move, yes.
They used to have a facility, but now they don't. It's just.
They, yes, their, their, their model is that they have a different church each week hosts the, the shelter. But also Expo has a building that they give to, to the Warm. It's interesting.
They had a really efficient operation going with, with the stuff that they bring with them, the collapsible beds. Some things are on site as well. And one thing is that they are always asked back. You know, in all the places they were going, all the different churches, they're very good stewards of, of the, of the areas that they, that they use for that. So I think it's just a, a great resource to have locally on that. I was, I was very impressed with how they run it.
Very good. Anything else?
One, one side thing, Chestnut Hills Shopping Center, there's active work going on there. There, there are workers there. I talked to a gentleman named Dennis who's running crews there right now that are replacing the HVAC systems on top of those things there. And they're talking about their plans there, and they're going to reseal the parking lot. And it was good to see something actually happening. So yeah, that would be the climate control systems are being replaced in there, and they're sealing up any leaks in the roof right now. So that was talked about for years. Nice to see actually happening.
And I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we have some members of Riverheads High School here.
Yep, welcome.
Would you all like to tell us a little bit about what you're sent to learn tonight?
You have to come up to the podium. Looks like you're the one with the necklace.
No.
You can, if you want.
From right there, from right there, be comfortable.
Yeah, so basically, we got to give a brief overview of how this meeting runs and what.
What class is this for?
Governor.
All right.
You said Riverheads.
Riverheads.
All right.
Wonderful.
So all of you are seniors? Two?
Two in the back.
We're including all.
Welcome.
We're glad to have you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that they at least include in their report that the Stanton City Council runs a lot smoother than the Augusta County Board?
Oh. Ouch.
They got real quiet on that one.
That's great.
Yeah.
Get through all this.
All right.
All right, and I will now accept a, a motion for the approval of minutes. And we have to do this as two separate things, with one for the special meeting.
You go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of February the 2nd, 2023, as printed.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Counselor Woods, second. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now for the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Like to make a motion that the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of February the 9th, 2023 be approved as printed.
Have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
I'll second. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to our regular meeting. The first item is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number Five. Ms. Bogart.
I'll invite Ms. Moyers, our CFO, to come up and talk through this item.
Welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back before you with this Budget Amendment Number Five. It seems like it's been a long time in the works. This is a city-only budget amendment. It did require a public hearing, which was properly advertised on February 2nd and held on February 9th. The purpose of this particular amendment is mainly to appropriate the ARPA funding along with a few budget amendments that did not make it into Amendment Number Four. In the General Fund, there is a true-up of the local health department funding, the negative 11,901, and the appropriation of an additional 50,000 for the West End Small Area Plan. And the next line item is just correcting the appropriation for the Union Town Small Area Plan. It was originally appropriate in the Water Fund, but it needs to be in the General Fund. Next is the appropriation of the ARPA funds in the amount of $7,508,326 for the CIP Fund for the following projects. The Montgomery Hall Park paving, $480,000. Gypsy Hill Park Bathroom and Montgomery Hall Park Bathroom, those will be $400,000 combined. The Montgomery Hall Park Bathrooms, $300,000. Oh, the, what was the bathhouse for the, the 400,000? Moxie Field Design, $200,000. Library Roof, $375,000. Two fire pumpers at $2 million. Two Public Works Dump Trucks at $300,000. Regional Animal Shelter Design and Relocation, $776,000. JDR Courthouse relocation expense, $2,277,326. Building security improvements for city facilities, $400,000. And the Community Development Fund is an appropriation of an additional $5,000 for the Brownfields Assessment Grant. The negative 75,000 in the Water Fund is the other side of that Union Town appropriation correction. And then there's an appropriation in the Environmental Fund for ARPA funding for the refuse standardization and the recycling center relocation. And lastly, is the stormwater appropriation of 1.2 million of ARPA funds for the Gypsy Hill Stream Restoration Project. The city manager recommends approval of this budget amendment as presented.
A quick question on the, we're hoping not to spend all of this money in its entirety. I mean, these are, these are approximate amounts not to exceed.
Individual projects, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have to spend all the ARPA money, but you mean in the individual projects.
But in other words, if a certain project does not spend that exact amount, that money could then be put into another one of these projects listed. Because it's approved for ARPA.
Our plan is to roll it into the JDR Courthouse.
The JDR Courthouse, yeah, because that's going to cost us more than that.
To have that clarified and put in the record that all excess funds will go into the JDR.
That is correct.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, yeah, with that, yeah, I, I would approve that, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Claffey.
Vice Mayor Darby.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding Budget Amendment Number Five, totaling $9,716,425.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessler. First off, hold. Is there any discussion?
I don't think so.
I'm fine with what the city manager said.
Everybody good?
Disgusting, yeah.
Mr. Robertson.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
I didn't hear that.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Jesse, for all the work on that.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse, and Liz.
Item B is the consideration of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services' Fiscal Year 2024 School Resource Officer Incentive Grant Program.
I don't look like Captain Kaufman, but I'm going to speak about this grant. I told him he did not have to be here this evening, so I told him I'd take care of this item for him. So this is the second round of funding from DCJS for school resource officers. The city did apply and receive funding for the first round, which was, there was no local match with that. So that was 100% carried by the state. In the second round, which is due, I believe, in March, there is a match of 25%, I'm sorry, 0.3967%, which will be realized by the existing salary of the officer who is in this position. So the city share is $34,793, DCJS of $52,912 for a total grant package of $87,705. This CSO is at Shelburne Middle School, and this obviously continues the partnership between local law enforcement agencies and school divisions. Happy to answer any questions about this grant if you have any. And but we're just asking for approval to go ahead and apply for this grant.
So, yeah. So explain to me, are we getting another school resource officer?
No, this is the existing, this was an officer in that was put into a role, so there was no FTE added.
Okay, so this grant is basically to help pay his salary.
Correct, that is correct. Yes, sir.
So the grant is basically covering the salary for a year?
It covered 100% in the first round, and now it's covering about 60% in the second round.
This year, it's going to cost us 37.
Yeah. But it's just that, it's just that we're not, it's not really, it's not costing us anything really because it's already budgeted. The salary's already budgeted, so we're receiving the additional revenue to cover the position. And now that will, it's going to eventually phase out. And it may be a three or four year, it may be a three-year grant cycle. So this is the second year of that cycle.
Can, Ms. Mayor, can we apply for it again down the road?
I believe, I don't know if, if, if it's offered, we, I'm sure we will.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions by members of council? Please, I'll consider a motion.
Ms. Mayor, I move city council authorized staff to apply for the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services.
of Criminal Justice Services FY 2024 School Resource Officer Incentive Grant Program.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second that.
Very much. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah. That brings us to item C, which is the consideration of Virginia Commission for the Arts 2023-2024 Creative Community Partnership Grant Application.
Mr. Rose is here this evening to walk through this item.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey, city council members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, this, we, tonight, we are requesting authorization from council to apply to the Virginia Commission for the Arts for a creative community, creative communities partnership grant. This is a grant that the city has successfully applied for, for literally decades. Um, and in the past, it has gone through, um, three to three arts organizations, Shannon Arts, Stonewall Brigade Band, and Stanton Augusta Art Center. Um, it's a rather small grant of, it's currently forty-five hundred dollars. It used to be a little bit more than that. Um, it is, does require a match of the city. So the city would put for also forty-five hundred. And then if we receive the grants, um, like we've had for the past thirty-plus years, it would be divided equally among those three groups. So each of them, um, would receive three thousand dollars. I, I would note that what I've heard over the years is although this is a rather small amount, it means a whole lot to these organizations, these nonprofit arts organizations. Um, the application deadline is April first. Um, I would note that, um, we do have at least one representative, um, here tonight. Um, Tom Kernan from, is the director of Shannon Arts. If you'd like to hear from him before you make a motion on, on this, or I could answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I had a quick question, Rodney. If you know, or if Mr. Kern knows, are there any, is there any criteria around how this money is spent by the organization, or is this by the organizations receiving the funds?
Um, part of the, um, application process, I receive information from these groups as far as the benefits, um, of the, what they do for the community and, and what people are they serving. So I don't think it's specified. It just goes, and they have to provide a copy of their budget. Um, so I, it's not specified for one particular, um, thing. Um, there, there's some things that's, it's not permitted for, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kernan?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Tom Kernan, and I am the new chairperson at Shannon Arts. You may be familiar with Mike Connor. Mike stepped down as chairperson the end of January after many years of sacrifice and service. Uh, and we are honored to carry on his tradition of coming and thanking you all so much for all the support you've given us over the years. My first inter- uh, interaction with Shannon Arts was nineteen ninety-five under Bob Small, Kathleen Tosco, and Paul Hildebrand. And I can speak directly to the effectiveness of Shannon Arts over the decades. And because of my experience with them, my life has been dedicated to the work that Shannon Arts does as well. I can tell you with Mike's leadership over the past years, we have used these funds to sustain us even through some very dark, literally dark times where we had to shut the theater down. We are finally starting to get back on our feet. We have new leadership, including Greg Bean from Stanton Downtown Development. He's actually our vice chair. And we have some very energetic new folks on the board, and we have a lot of great ideas and plans to be more proactive in being involved in the community, developing camps with Stanton Parks and Rec, developing multi-generational camps, developing, um, targeted aspects to middle school folks. All of these things we desperately want to do. And any funding we can receive would absolutely go to support those programs, develop them, and reach out to our community even more than we've been able to do so. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you so much for everything you've done before. And I can promise you, we will be good stewards of whatever funding you would wish to offer us in the future. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate. Feel free to reach out to me.
Tom, I, I would like to, just so the people of Stanton, how, how many different, you know, on a yearly basis, how many different plays does Shannon Arts produce or put out there?
That is a very good question. We average between six and eight productions, and that can vary in size and shape and in scope. Uh, for this coming year, we have already done two performances, and we have between five or six that are proposed going forward. Um, in fact, our newest perfection will be Sound of Music coming up, uh, next month. And we have over sixty people involved in that. All of our productions on the production side are volunteers. We have a few paid staff now. We've been able to accomplish that. But everybody that's involved in production volunteers their time and effort.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everything you do for the city of Stanton.
Thank you very much. We're very excited, looking forward to what the new year brings.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no.
Counselor.
I move, uh, I move that city council authorize staff to apply for the 2023-2024 Creative Communities Partnership Grant with the understanding that acceptance will be determined by the availability of local funds to match the grant.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and that brings us, well, I feel very remiss that we haven't introduced our latest member.
I was going to.
Well, since we're getting ready to a pointer to something, we ought to introduce her to all the people.
Do you want me to do that first?
Please.
All right, I wrote that up for my matters. But, yeah, allow me to introduce Amanda Kaufman. This is day three, right? Day three for her. Uh, I'm so excited to have Amanda join as our new assistant city manager. And a few words about Amanda, she has a wealth of experience in local government management. Um, her last, um, locality that she served in was Bedford County. And before that, she served in the city of Marion, Iowa for seven and a half years, first as assistant and then deputy city manager. And before serving in Marion, she was a local government management fellow through the International City County Management Association, which is a very prestigious honor, uh, with the city of Lake, Lake Kansas. She has an MPA from UNC at Chapel Hill and has spent time as an AmeriCorps volunteer. I'm very excited to have Amanda join our team, and I can't wait for everyone to get to know her better. So welcome, Amanda.
We're very pleased to have you, Amanda.
Good to have you, Amanda.
And now we're going to put you to work. So let's see. Um, would you like me to move on to go ahead?
Please, please.
Um, so the city of Stanton is a member locality of several regional agencies. And the four in particular, this evening, I'll be asking you to, to, um, appoint Ms. Kaufman to are the Bright Transit Advisory Committee, or BTAC, Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program, and the Blue Ridge Criminal Justice Board. There are four resolutions in front of you this evening that appoints Ms. Kaufman to each of these agencies. In addition to these four, I sent you an email, um, last week that would, I was also appointing her, I appointed her also to the Shenandoah Valley Social Services Advisor, um, Administrative Board. So she will be joining that board as well. Um, happy to answer any questions. And I believe she was, she was already at the training today for, um, the PDC. So that was, that was good that that happened at that time. So happy to answer any questions about any of these.
Members of council, do you have any questions?
I'm sure you're excited to have that off your plate there.
On day three.
Yeah. Well, also, actually, some of this comes off Mr. Blair's plate. He served on the SAW MPO and the, and the, um, Bright. So I know, um, he's relieved as well. So thumbs up for him.
Glad to have him.
We are, we are all very glad.
We're all very glad to see you.
Yeah, best of luck, Amanda. We're glad you're here.
Don't be afraid to call us if we can help.
Aye.
Is there a motion involved?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Wood.
I move to appoint Assistant City Manager Amanda Kaufman as representative of the city to the policy board of the following regional agencies. Bright Transit Authority Advisory Committee, the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program, and the Blue Ridge Criminal Justice Board, and also the, did you add the other one?
No, that one, I, we already took care of. So it's just those four that are in front of you this evening.
Okay.
Very good. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Good. Any discussion? We'll see if we can find some more things we can do next week. Yeah. All right, Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. We attempted to set world records here. So, uh, we're going to turn things over to the city manager with, with the, uh, in, advice that, you know, brevity is your.
I, I am going to be very.
The key to your popularity.
Sir, I only have three things to mention and under my matters. One is to remind her to property owners that they have until March second to submit an appeal to their real estate assessments, if they would like to do that. If you have questions about your assessment, please contact the city assessor's office at five four oh three three two three eight two seven. The city, so some of you are aware, may not be aware, that you could vote for the city of Stanton under the USA Today Ten Best Contest. Well, we got number eight under best small town cultural scene, but we're the only Virginia city in the top ten.
Very good.
So congratulations, Stan.
Go Stanton, all right.
Uh, finally, I put in front of you a two-page document about the public health emergency and the rollback of social services benefits. And I would just like to quickly talk about that so the public can hear this as well. Information has been going out through the State Department of Social Services and the Shenandoah Valley Social Services about the rollback of benefits due to the ending of the public health emergency. Um, benefits were expanded during the COVID health emergency, and this includes benefits related to medical assistance, childcare subsidies, SNAP or food assistance, and TANF view, which is the, are the educational and workforce programs that help families achieve self-sufficiency. So if you receive social service benefits or know someone who does, and you have questions, please reach out to the Shenandoah Valley Social Services at five four oh two four five fifty-eight hundred, and they can provide assistance and answer any questions you have. And also, there's information on their Facebook page and on their website. So we encourage folks who are concerned about their benefits or know somebody who is, to please reach out to social services and get more information. Thank you. That's all I have.
Wow, all right. Which brings us to matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time the council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with these rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Would anyone like to speak?
My name's Ted Lawhorn. I live in Stanton on, uh, Baylor Street. First of all, uh, many of you know me. I ran for office. I am very pleased to see you all here. And I would like to thank you for your service. And thank you for the, the, uh, the work that you put in. It's nice to see a city council work together, as I see you doing now. And I'm very pleased with that, very happy with that. Uh, one thing I would like to mention is the, uh, the recent assessments. Uh, I have talked to some people, well, just a little while ago, who have just moved into town. And their assessments have, have, have gone up greatly, as we all know. One thing I might suggest to you is to maybe review assessments to the fact that, um, and, and make, check assessments and depend upon how much percentage-wise they go up. In other words, if somebody has had an extreme percentage increase in their assessment, that that might be a, a flag or a signal, uh, that taxes need to be reviewed. I understand, uh, somebody told me the other day, uh, you know, maybe I'm kind of glad I didn't get on here because I know the, uh, the eleven million dollars that y'all were throwing, that was thrown at you just recently here with the, uh, uh, stormwater runoff and the, and some of the other things. And I know that some of the monies, monies from the assessments can offset that, hopefully. But, uh, I have spoken to some people who are disadvantaged by these new assessments and would ask you, uh, Mrs. Beauregard, uh, to make sure that the assessor is, uh, how, how was it? Somebody told me they called the assessor and he was not very, uh, forth good, you know, was in, in essence, a little bit rude. But, uh, just to make sure that the assessor realizes that, that a lot of these, uh, increases are, and, and some people doesn't hurt, and then a lot of people, it does hurt really bad. So just make sure that these assessments, uh, that you review those and, and discuss them amongst yourselves, if you would, uh, ways to mitigate some of the worst-case scenarios and be available to these people who, if they do go to the assessor and do not get a, uh, favorable outcome, that you are available to them and to listen to them and to listen to their stories. Because there are a lot of people in town, I know, that these assessments are hurting right now. But again, congratulations to Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Darby, and to Ms. Woods, and Ms. Edwards, and Ms. Arrowood, and Mark, to you also. Thank you. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Holmes is a, a great addition to this. And again, thank you. What I wanted to see when I ran for office, I think I'm seeing now. And I'm very appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, too.
Mr. Lawhorn, thank you.
Mr. Kessler, is anyone online?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. This is Sidney Connors, one oh six A, Skyline Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, to dovetail on what, uh, Mr. Lawhorn just talked about, I think the city of Stanton would be well-served if a written slash online, uh, initiation of a dispute with your assessment would be developed. Um, not a lot of people are going to be willing to call up and argue with the person who assessed your house in the first place. Um, I think that would help a lot of people feel more comfortable initiating the process. Um, and that's my suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, so I don't know if I quite understood it, but you're talking about like the Parks and Recs and, uh, the, the summer camp program, the funding? Well, as someone, like, I worked there, like, over the summer. I worked for the summer camp and for Parks and Recs. And we're talking about the funding, and I was just thinking that we didn't really have much there when I was working. Like, we had, like, for the, especially with the summer camp, we had no money. We couldn't really do much for the kids. And it was, it was mostly, there's only so much you can do. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for doing.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler, anyone on the phone line?
No, sir.
Anyone else from the audience, like, speak? I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, particularly our Riverhead students. Please stop up here. We'd like to shake your hand and meet y'all. And, uh.
They picked a good night to come, so one of these eleven o'clock nights.
I just want it to be duly noted that the meeting is over at eight oh seven PM. Meeting in German. Thank y'all.